Y'all join me in a word of prayer. Father, your word says that you are the one who appoints and establishes all governing authorities. So I thank you for and bless each of these commissioners for their desire, commitment, and passion to provide leadership on behalf of the people of Bonner County. May they earnestly and diligently seek your abundant wisdom and specific guidance so that the fullness of your righteousness and justice prevails in the decisions, policies, and laws that affect and govern us. Throughout this meeting, I pray that everyone would treat each other with dignity and respect, that all striving, strife, and division would cease, and that a spirit of unity, love, and peace would prevail in each heart. May everything that transpires here today reflect the character and nature of your son and our Lord Jesus Christ, in whose precious and mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All men in the place of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna go over the purpose of this meeting. This is a Tuesday morning Bonner County Commissioners Business Meeting. My intent is to chair in depth effective public meetings that accomplish the business of the county and limit potential liabilities. We are not required by law to allow comment or discussion in our Tuesday morning business meetings. However, the previous board thought that it was best if we hear from the public because we work for you. If at any time it gets out of hand, I'll close all public comment. Any derogatory and innuendos, personal attacks, or anything that's considered aggressive, you won't get a warning, you'll be asked to leave. If you don't leave, then Sandpoint Police will explain to you over at one of the sheriff's facilities what that actually means. So we're not gonna have the meeting hijacked anymore. I'm gonna allow 12 minutes total public comment. And so if four or five of y'all are on the same page, decide which person is gonna speak for y'all so that we can move orderly. We don't have a lot of repetition. And so at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the order of the agenda.
You want to get in first?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the order of the agenda to strike two items that I put forth under B O C C Luke Ahmet, three and four. And so that people understand why we have a meeting this afternoon that is an open session with the Director of Planning. And I think that I need to not get out over my skis and follow the process if that is my expectation of others. So I would like to amend the order of the agenda to strike items three and four from B O C C Luke Ahmet and to adopt the remainder of the agenda.
Can I second the motion?
All right. Motion passes. Do we have a first and a second to amend that?
Please vote, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Now the order of agenda. No, you did the amendment. Now we have to do the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to adopt the order of the agenda.
I second the motion.
All right. The first and the second to adopt the order of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. District Two Commissioner report.
All right. So first, we have a follow-up. So some community members expressed interest in the occupancy notification that results in planning entering the home post the occupancy notice. Legal is still reviewing that. They are, it is on their radar, and we're hopefully getting answer on their legal review of that process from planning. The A G has agreed that they would come in April, but I did send a request to see if we can't do open meeting training earlier than April so that we can resolve some of the issues that we have with open meeting. I got some community concerns from District Two. One of them was that the Bonner County B is indicating that they're not going to deliver to District Two region. So since December, the deliveries have been spotty with it completely stopping in February. So some of the question from community members is, is if the county is paying to notice in the Bonner B, but they're not going to deliver to the area anymore, is there another option? Because that area is not heavy on Internet. So I'm gonna research what our options are with that. In that particular area, everybody does get that nickel added, and so it might be something to consider, but that concern came to me today. So that has to be researched because we want to make sure that everybody is duly informed on what's going on. Another community question has come up as to how do we best include members of the community that are part of special interests groups where their group is doing a significant amount of research about topics that impact our county, but their opinion and information isn't being utilized and/or the person or persons don't feel like they're welcomed into the function of county business? I'm gonna work on a strategy for inclusion for those people that have these groups so that we can make sure we're delivering clear, concise information to the county so that we can then make sure that we're including that resource. And that's a benefit to our county as a whole. It's not costly to our county to use the information that these agencies have. We have a lot of people focused on water. They have a lot of input on wetlands, on our waterway systems, and we need to make sure those persons feel welcomed. I did get a question about executive session, and I have tried, I am going to remind people that Chapter 74, it's our rule on transparency. And one of the things that I spoke with Legal about is when we do executive session, it is narrowly construed. It is not at the discretion of the board. It's to be very specific. The mere presence of Legal does not constitute executive session. So one of the things that has to happen, for example, if we're going to talk about human resources, the reason that it goes in executive session is only what we're supposed to discuss at that point. But all the other issues related to human resources that don't fit personnel-specific don't belong in executive session, that's an open dialogue in front of the public that should be occurring. We cannot use the idea of saying personnel and mention it. What we're supposed to do is segregate that piece off and talk about that only in executive session, but be transparent to the community. And we, as a community, have to keep striving for the correct use of executive session because that's what leads to this increase of concern of trust in Bonner County government. So next, there was a, we continue to put forth a code of conduct policy that has been updated and approved by Legal with a request for a workshop from some members of the board. I did ask H R to start that workshop, but it wasn't put in place because it was pushed back for some reason. That is going to take place because it was requested. There was no motion about a workshop. There was a motion to accept the policy as written, and that is what failed. The workshop should move forward so that we're ensuring that we're following code of conduct and transparency for the community. It is not the right of a board member to deny another board member's request for something. I, over the last week, we had quite a few files that came up for planning. And one of the things I did was I called each of the agencies to either thank them for their comment or get more information from their comments. I am going to meet with Fish and Game on this Friday to kind of go over their process. The goal is to encourage people to give us value information when we're sending these requests out so that we can hold ourselves accountable as a board to include that information while also concurrently respecting the fact that members of agencies are taking the time to respond to our needs. If we don't show respect in that way, we're not going to get that information, and we need to. As taxpayers, we have paid for that service. They're willing to participate, and we need to open the door and allow them to give that comment. That doesn't necessarily mean we'll use it, but it definitely needs to be that we consider it. I can tell you the conversation with Fish and Game, they were very thankful for receiving a call to go over the letter that they had written on the particular file. And I think that's important for us to do. And as a community that wants to be more involved, you guys can definitely do that too. Reach out to the different areas of interest to ensure that we're eliciting the comments that help us with our call plan. We don't want to close the door to agencies and that information. And so that's what I'm hoping to get on the agenda next week is a better process, as well as I, I'm gonna put the request in that we set our agenda openly so that we can ensure that everybody knows what's happening, to include my continued request that executive session provides a better description of what we're doing. Because in the Rule 74-206, it clearly states that if you discuss something that is not on the executive session title in that executive session, it's a violation of the open meeting law. And so we don't want to do that. And the only way you have that checks and balances is if you offer something a little bit more than H R, executive session, personnel. And so I have also, I have to go back to a community concern that we keep seeing H R as an executive session item with no clear understanding. I'm aware that members of the community are feeling like there is a feeling from the board to get rid of human resources. We don't want to create a negative atmosphere, and that will also be easily remedied by explaining what this executive session for H R is and how we set the agenda items. Because I will be honest, I have no idea what that item is for. It's not explained in that line, and I'm not aware of it either. So I'm not part of that process, so I can't give an educated response. I am gonna allow H R to give a comment on something that's also being discussed throughout the county about a lock. So can you give that comment, Cindy?
So Commissioner Williams had requested a lock for her door, and it is for the purpose of that, it's due to a medical condition that obviously is confidential, and that was the purpose of the lock. She did purchase her own lock to use, but that didn't work, I guess, for facilities. And so they purchased their own. And so that's really, in a nutshell, about the lock. It was really for medical purposes, and that was it.
Yeah. And so I have an allergy, and I had a reaction to something when I went in. The next day, I had locked the door, but the door was open. And that was the best remedy that we could think of to not have an unnecessary exposure. There wasn't anything untoward about it. I did buy the lock myself, but it was a facility's decision to change it out. This has been gossip throughout the county, and hopefully it puts it to bed that it wasn't an unreasonable request on my part. And that is all I have for you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So today, we got a report that inflation rose one-half of one percent in January, so we are at an increase of 6.4% from last year. What does that have to do with the Bonner County Commissioners? Well, as part of our duties under Idaho Code, we're tasked with providing certain services to our counties. And that requires funds, and those funds come from my neighbors. So how we pay for things is always one of the main concerns, because what accompanies is the understanding that government does not generate revenue unto itself. The way that revenue is generated through government is that we go out with our hands out and we say, we want roads, we want police, we want fire protection, and it has to be paid for by someone, and that's the taxpayer, and I'm very aware of that. As I brought forth in my last meeting, my priorities will be public safety and infrastructure. And Attorney General Labrador has made some statements, and I am very appreciative of his focus on public safety, especially in regards to children. But here's what he had to say in last, last week, and I think it's important for all of us to recognize, and I do keep this in my mind. Idaho is facing an abhorrent attack on our children. As the Internet has become more pervasive, predators have found a new and easier way to target our kids. And we are doing everything we can to stop this from happening in Idaho. Despite our office's best efforts, we cannot do this alone, and we need local law enforcement's help. I know our men and women in uniform share my dedication to protecting Idaho's children, and I look forward to us taking coordinated action to stop this threat. For my first week in office, I said, we will focus the people's resources on prosecuting child exploiters and other serious criminals, and I plan to deliver on that promise. I feel it's our duty as Bonner County Commissioners to do everything we can to assist the Attorney General in protecting our children. In addition to that, I drove out to check out a sinkhole. It was actually one of the highlights of my week last week. As I was driving out there, lo and behold, there's a school bus driving across those roads. So not only do we have to protect our schoolchildren from predators, we also have a duty to provide them safe transport on our roads, and that is a responsibility that will be a focus of this Commission and hopefully of this Board. Yesterday, I was able to go and visit our Justice Services Building and just get a brief understanding of what they do over there. That is a great building. But more importantly, I think that it's a testament to thoughtful planning. That building was not just designed for the needs of today, but it was also designed for the needs of tomorrow with an understanding that our youth are in great struggle, for whatever reason, and it's our duty to do our best to support them. There it is, my comments for today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I will open it to public comment, and I will remind you that we are all adults, and so let's do our best to behave like adults. And so at this time, I will take public comment. Kathy?
Where do you want me to stand?
Right there, fine.
Okay.
State your name for the record.
Kathy Rose from Samuel. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Happy Saint Valentine's Day. I worked during the day. I had to take today off to come here to speak for my public comment. I watched during the live YouTube for the last couple of weeks. But I felt compelled to take today off and come and speak to my elected representatives. I will exercise my right to criticize and express my grievances. I knew there would be tension on this new board, but I never thought it would be such blatant disrespect. Disrespect among yourselves and disrespect for the people who elected you. Bonner County residents want more transparency. We're tired of the past practices, the backroom dealings, the habitual use of legal opinion as a veil.
I'll remind you to mind your accusations.
This is my time to speak.
Your time is granted by the Chair and only by the Chair.
This is public comment, and I have three minutes to speak.
You have whatever I give you. I can stop you at any time, and if you accuse somebody of him, you will be done. Continue.
We don't want to be talked down to. We don't want the disparaging comments. You're in a position where every decision you make, you're gonna make some people happy and some people upset. You're gonna get complaints. You're gonna get legal suits. If you can't deal with it, maybe this isn't the job for you. You're not our rulers, you're not our leaders. We're not peasants. The power rests in the people, and you're feeling that, and you don't like it. It's part of your job. Time to cowboy out.
Thank you. Dan?
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner, Board Commissioners, Kathy Rose for the record. I'm gonna read Bonner County ordinance title 1200B as I have commented on it three weeks ago, and nothing has been done and no communication has been made to me. Public comment segment, 1200B. The purpose for the public comment segment, this is ordinance, this isn't, how do we say discretionary? Is of the Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting is to enable citizens with issues or concerns they wish to bring to the Board's attention and afford an opportunity for consideration on a future agenda for possible Board action. The Board will not engage in dialogue with the presenter now during this session, but rather may choose to schedule the presenter's topic for Board consideration at a future business meeting, which is on a Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. Questions may be directed to the individual Board members for the purpose of clarifying issues or to obtain additional information for the purpose of scheduling the matter for a future business meeting. However, no action will be taken on this issue or concern brought to the Board's attention during this session right now. The Chair will not entertain any circumstance, will not entertain under any circumstances comments derogatory in nature toward the Board or any Board member, staff member, elected official, or member of the public. If you recall, I've heard the words before this session started, lawful, moral, and just. And I believe they came from the Chair, if I'm not misappropriating those comments. This is the process by which citizens are allowed to participate in setting the direction of government activities. Not allowing citizen participation may be the way it's been done before. However, this, in this want-to-know environment, that old way is not desirable. We have good suggestions. The process is neither liberal nor conservative, and we need a workshop to give them to you so that from that workshop, we can bring those ideas to that agenda. And on that note, I would like to request my copy of everything sitting in front of each one of you as public record at the beginning of the meeting. And I wish to stop the meeting now. I wish to make those documents available to anybody who wants them by hand raised because that is a violation of open meeting law. And with that, I will conclude my comment. And I'm waiting for my documents.
I believe you know how to file for public records of this list. You go through the process. Unless my attorney advises me, we don't have to do the process, we're gonna continue the process.
I'll consult Attorney General. Thank you.
Thank you. You may.
Jim Kelly, President of the Board for the Record. As I saw in the Zoom meeting from last week's meeting, one week ago today, Commissioner Ahmat, you entertained a motion to terminate the use of Zoom for future meetings. And Commissioner Ratchell, I believe you stepped down from your role as the Chair and you seconded that motion. The two of you later voted for it. Commissioner Williams, thank you for being the voice of reason, you voted against it. What I understood, the comment from Commissioner Ahmat was that you met in the executive session, that somehow there was a person unnamed who was expressing some kind of concern about not hearing something on Zoom due to technical difficulty, and that would result in a lawsuit. Well, if that's, if you're basing your decisions on the fear of a lawsuit, I guarantee you never get anything done. I spent 35 years in law enforcement. I was constantly threatened with lawsuits. I was even sued on a number of occasions. That happens. And if I based my decisions on whether it'd be sued or not, I probably never would have gotten out of that patrol car to do anything. I would have been frozen in a position. But I knew that as long as I acted legally, morally, within, and within department policy, that even if I was sued, I could successfully defend myself. And I think I, I would speak for a lot of people in this room. If you were sued because someone missed something on YouTube or on Zoom, I'm pretty sure I would be glad to get up and testify in your behalf. And if you're concerned about someone not hearing something, I have a couple of suggestions. One is you separately audiotape this, every Board Commissioner meeting. If someone misses something, they complain about it, invite them into the Commissioner's office, let them hear the portion they missed on the audio. And if you want to take that one step further, if you could do a transcript of each meeting based on the audio, and that way anybody who threatened to sue because they missed something, they could A, either hear it on the audio and/or see it in writing. So I ask that you keep Zoom. I use Zoom. That's how I watch the meetings. I have an appointment this morning at 10:00. I can't stay for a whole meeting. I watch all the, all the Commissioner meetings on Zoom. That's how I get my information. And I would ask you, please, Commissioner Ahmat, I'm asking you personally, please resubmit your motion or create a new motion to keep Zoom to let the residents and the business owners of this county be able to communicate with the Board directly when they can't physically be present. And even if they, if they don't want to communicate with it directly, at least be able to see firsthand the account of what happened at each Commissioner meeting and not read the report of it in the newspaper. So I ask you to do that, Commissioner Ahmat, please.
Thank you for your service, and they are recorded, and there is transcript on the website that's available. We will continue the livestream. We just are not having the interaction on Zoom.
I understand, Commissioner.
That's where the legal process Mr. Rose had brought up, that for some reason, somebody can't interact, and we gave them permission to do it, then it voids the whole meeting, and that would make us go through the whole process again. And if somebody doesn't hear good on that one, then you may be all year trying to get that one Tuesday morning business meeting done. So that's the reason that we're not gonna have the interaction on the Zoom. We will have the interaction here, but not on the Zoom. The planning hearings will still be Zoomed and interactions there, but not on the Tuesday morning business meeting.
I respectfully disagree.
You've already spoken, Mr. Rose. Chair recognizes the lady in the purple. State your name for the record.
My name is Lilia Beltran. First of all, I'm so thankful as an immigrant to live in this country where the freedom of speech is the flag. And I think that that freedom of speech should be used to say even dumb things or even things that others don't want to hear. But we have the right, and we have to respect it whether we like it or not. And we shouldn't be disrespectful to the people who work for us, who work with us, and that we work for. So being said that, I'm so glad that Mr. Ahmat touched the subject of the budget, of the money that we need. And as being part of the people, there's this urge that since McNamara was here, I be traveling and unilaterally, excuse my English, he decided to raise the money that the Commissioners make. And he said that if it was needed to take money from other parts to pay for what he was making, it was worth it, because he said, you are a businessman, you pay for that. Well, that time, I tried to tell him he was not a businessman, that I didn't hire him as a businessman. I hired him to represent me. So we think, a lot of people think that it's a lot of money what the Commissioners make. And if we need to, more budget for education for our kids, that is the most important thing, maybe we should, it would be taken in consideration to reduce the amount of money that we spend on the Commissioners to give it to the kids, because they are our future, they are what we need the most. And as a Commissioner, you represent us, and I think it would be fair that you receive the same amount of money that is representative for what the people make. So back then, he was talking about $80,000, $100,000 a month, a year, and I told him, no one does that here. People, we don't do that here. So I'm still not sure how much money you make, but I think that it should be representative. If the people make an average of $50,000, $60,000, that's how much the Commissioners should get, and we can use that money on our kids, because as Ahmat said, our kids are what we need the most. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. We're in school trouble.
Thanks. Sheriff Wheeler?
Yeah, good morning. Sheriff Darryl Wheeler for the record. I just wanna echo the prayer that was made this morning by the pastor. I think that right now, there's a fork in the road, and we can go either continue the way that we've been going, or we can change. And as an elected official, I would just want to tell you that I have been embarrassed of the lack of decorum that has happened in the meeting, especially against our Commissioner in District Two. And I pray that there is gonna be a real change in professionalism, and the code of conduct is followed by all of us in the county, including the Commissioners, and that Commissioner Williams showed no respect because she has, is an elected officer, and I believe that there's that belief in the county. So I thank you, and I just ask that God's prayer, God's, that prayer this morning is answered, and that there's a big change. And thank you and appreciate the work you do.
Mr. Bowman?
Dave Bowman for the record. July 5th last year, the B O C C passed a resolution to create a personnel policy prohibiting employees from bringing pets into the county buildings or vehicles beginning on August 1st. Nobody will accept responsibility for it, but somehow or other, that personnel policy, which was strictly for personnel, got expanded to all persons entering county buildings, and signs were posted. and signs were posted at the doors. They're still there. All persons except one planning commissioner who's brought her dog to every planning commission meeting she's attended in this building since then. Rules for thee, not for me. So I asked the planning director why no one ever stopped that practice. He said he was told by a commissioner last year to stand down and let it go. He wouldn't name that commissioner. I think we all know who that would have been. When I inquired with risk management about how personnel policy was being applied to all building visitors, I was simply referred, again, back to the personnel policy. Eventually, I was referred to the county attorney, who probably should have, who actually should have advised the B O C C and risk management of their error when the signs went up, but didn't. And finally, county prosecutor Louis Marshall confirmed what I already knew, but nobody would say, that the policy does not apply to anyone who is not an employee. So we're a commissioner. You have two lawful options, and they're both very simple. You pass a motion creating a policy forbidding pets in the county buildings, in which case it must apply to all persons equally, even friends and commissioners. Or remove the signs and stay with the current personnel policy, which applies only to employees and no one else. Either way, the signs should come down today and not go back until or unless you create a policy correctly. And it's important to know, I want to make this clear, the core issue here isn't just about bringing your dog. It's about rules for thee and not for me. And just sloppy policymaking. That's all I have. Thank you.
At this time, I'll close public comment. We went three minutes longer than I gave, and we will move on to the next item. Emergency management. Bob Howard? I'll close for public comment.
Chairman, I represent a lot of citizens in this community. It's the Idaho Conservation League, and I request 30 seconds.
You got it.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Bradshaw, Commissioners Omat and Williams. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. As I said, my name is Jennifer Exterm. I work for the Idaho Conservation League, and I'm so glad to be able to address you this morning. I want to thank Commissioner Williams for her spot-on comments about inclusivity and openness in county government. And I'm simply here to ask you, on behalf of our members in Bonner County, that you reinstate the Zoom option so that the public and myself can participate in your meetings when circumstances preclude us from participating in person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
All right. Public comment to the agenda. Can you read them off to Edith?
Sure. Thanks.
Okay. Facilities, it's heater over in jail, over in jail, generator room with $6,375. Road and bridge with greater bits for $45,598. Road and bridge truck repairs to one of the big trucks, $12,043.53. Road and bridge traffic counters and from Corral Sales Company, $7,121.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye. Motion passes. Emergency management.
Exhalar Fire Mitigation Program Manager for Bonner County. The attached contract is between Bonner County and Idaho Grinding Industries LLC to provide project work for the treatment and/or removal of hazardous wildland fuels at locations and compliance specifications for the bonfire program. There will be no county match, and this contract will be funded from Idaho Department of Land's grant. I'd recommend the Board of County Commissioners accept and assign the contract for professional services between Bonner County and Idaho Grinding Industries.
I make a motion to approve and sign the contract for hazardous fuels treatment between Bonner County and Idaho Grinding Industries LLC for project work on the bonfire program funded by the Idaho Department of Land's grant with no county match.
I would second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have first and second to approve project work through Grinding Industries LLC. All in favor?
Public comment, sir?
Public comment. You want to grind it?
Yeah. So Idaho Grinding LLC, have they in the past done this, you know, part of work for the hazardous fuels?
Not for the bonfire program. This contract is simply for me to solicit bids to that private contractor.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next item.
Next item, item two. The attached contract is between Bonner County and Mountain View Forestry to provide project work for the treatment and no fan or removal of hazardous wildland fuels at locations and compliance and specifications for the bonfire program. There will be no county match, and this contract is also funded through an Idaho Department of Land's grant. I would recommend the Board of County Commissioners accept and sign the contract for professional services between Bonner County and Mountain View Forestry.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve and sign the contract for hazardous fuels treatment between Bonner County and Mountain View Forestry for project work on the bonfire program funded by an Idaho Department of Land's grant with no county match.
I second the motion.
Okay, public comment?
Same question.
Same answer, yeah. It's just to solicit bids.
It's just an exclusive thing?
No, to solicit bids to this private contractor. To allow them the opportunity.
So, just so I understand, you're soliciting bid to one single contractor?
No, they will be added to my list of contractors.
Thank you. I feel much better now.
Any others? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Nick. Solid Waste?
Spencer Ferguson Engineering Department. We have the Solid Waste on September 14th, 2021, in Bonner County. Order Commissioners retained the service of Great West Engineering for the purpose of designing and preparing the project documents for the Solid Waste Facilities Improvement Project. On August 1st, the B O C C opened the bids for the project, which were ultimately rejected due to high cost. Following the initial bid, Great West has reduced the project scope and revised the project documents in order to obtain bids that more closely match our project budget. The revised project documents and drawings have been completed, and Solid Waste would like to move forward with bidding the project again. Great West has prepared the attached invitation to bid with the intent of advertising February 24th and March 30th this year. Seal bids will be received by the county commissioner's office until 10:00 a.m. March 24th. This project is funded by the USD RD loan approved by the B O C C on June 1st, 2021.
I move to authorize Solid Waste to re-advertise for bids for the Solid Waste Facilities Improvements Project. I further authorize the chairman to sign administratively.
Mr. Chairman, I would second that motion.
All right, public comment? Okay, we have first and second to move forward with that item. All in favor? Aye, motion passes. Human Resources.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Baker for the record. We have one item for today, and that's a request to recruit for Heavy Equipment Operator One for Road and Bridge. That's it.
Can you speak up, please?
Yeah, I can do it again. We have one position for today. It's Road and Bridge Heavy Equipment Operator One.
Mr. Chairman, I hereby make the following motion. Based on the information before us, I move to approve commencing with approval of the following vacated positions. Road and Bridge Heavy Equipment Operator One.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have first and second. Public comment? You're fine.
So is this a new position or is this a vacated one?
Vacated.
Vacated.
Thank you.
All, yes, ma'am?
Quick question. Are we not live streaming? I'm new to this.
It's on YouTube. We just don't need the screens for that?
Oh, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at the agenda that's put out on the website.
Only the items she spoke on.
Correct. Can I speak, ma'am?
Yes.
And on that agenda, it says, human resources, request recruit one position, which doesn't leave a lot for the public to understand what that's about until they get here or they're listening onto Zoom, which they can't. And now that they can't and are not here, they have no idea what that position would be. However, in the meeting packet that I did get from Commissioner Williams, it states that it is Equipment Operator One, request for a vacated position, and it gives a whole lot more. Secondly, by putting that same piece that's on the pieces of paper you have that none of us have, you're advertising for the job. It serves two purposes. One, it tells us what you're talking about. And two, it tells the whole public, if you're interested in a job, here it is. So why can't we do it?
We have to approve filling it before we post it? Give the thought. Thank you. All in favor?
If you discuss it here in the meeting, it should be there on the notice.
Mr. Rose? I think I answered your question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. B O T C, Ms. Williams?
Thank you, sir. So this issue is regarding Zoom use. So concern is risk for, one, litigation resulting in technology failure; two, the requirement to redo any meetings wherein a technology mishap occurs; three, a notation by the Idaho Association of Counties identified a risk related to technology failure, and a risk for the need to re-agendize the items. So those were the three issues with using Zoom. So I'm going to give a brief history. History, one, Bonner County has zero litigation suits filed resulting from a Zoom technology failure. Two, Bonner County has redone a total of zero hearings since allowing the public access to county business via Zoom over the past two years approximately. Three, Bonner County employees continue to have a need for Zoom. For example, planning and zoning uses Zoom to present to the board. Recommendations from Commissioner Williams. So I recommended that we review a disclaimer, for which I wrote the disclaimer intended for legal for review. So I'm going to read you the disclaimer and the legal response that I received. Disclaimer. Use of the Zoom link is not intended as a substitute for in-person or written participation in the proceedings of county business. It is possible to have technology issues with the Zoom link to include, but not limited to, difficulty hearing and being heard. If you have information to communicate to the county, please come in person or send your information in writing. The county cannot assure that the information will be received via Zoom. Use of Zoom is at the risk of the user. Technology failure will not result in the county re-agendizing and/or accepting post-deadline information on any given item or issue. In-person attendance is recommended. I sent this to Bill Wilson, and his response was, that is a very well-written and would definitely reduce the risk. I brought up with using Zoom. I said, I said in exec session earlier this week, if you guys chose to go in this direction, we could do our best to work around the risk. However, it is impossible to know for certain what a court would do when faced with the issue. So I still believe that the safest thing to do is to stop using Zoom entirely. The point that I'm going to focus on is that the disclaimer was identified to reduce the risk. So my rationale, Title I, County Operations, Chapter 1, 130. The Board of County Commissioners adopts a policy of non-discrimination on the basis of disability. Subsection B, it is this policy of the county that with reasonable accommodation, all programs and activities shall be accessible to and usable by qualified persons with disabilities. I want to give a definition of accommodation, which says a convenient arrangement, a settlement, a compromise. Title I, Chapter 2, 1, 200. The chapter is enacted for the purpose of establishing a regular meeting schedule for Bonner County Board of Commissioners in order that the board activities can be carried out with greater public participation and awareness, Ordinance 192. So I'm going to define these terms because it's part of the foundation of my argument. Greater is of an extent amount or intensity considerably above normal or average. Participation, the action of taking part in something. And I'm going to stress the word action. Awareness, knowledge, or perception. As a public entity, we will never be able to remove all the risks. However, we must use risk mitigation tools and strategies whenever possible to reduce the risks associated with decisions. Idaho Association of Counties has identified a risk associated with the use of Zoom. Above is a disclaimer that, based on the opinion from legal, does in fact reduce the risks associated with using Zoom. It clearly states that the use of Zoom is at the risk of the user and that Zoom is not a replacement for in-person or written participation in a given activity. The argument to discontinue Zoom solely based on an inherent risk that exists with a public entity is a specious argument. When one reviews the code and the ordinance of the state of Idaho and Bonner County, it is clear that the law requires that we're using the imminent nature, which we find when we're looking at executive session as an example. It doesn't say we can go into executive session if we fear it has to be imminent. I also want to stress that YouTube actually serves to disenfranchise the public because the requirement is greater participation. Using YouTube actually limits participation. Therefore, we're going the wrong direction of what our current policy says. In order to participate, it is an action. To sit and watch on YouTube is passive. So we need to review the risk, make a clear decision that it does in fact mitigate it, and then address the issues moving forward. We don't make a decision. To argue the case in the manner that we are, it doesn't make sense. We have a greater risk with all of you coming to this building than using Zoom. That is a greater inherent risk. And so my argument is very clearly documented. It does reduce the risk. And I actually am going to argue that if we fail to reinstate Zoom today, because that's what's on the agenda, we are disenfranchising disabled people that we have an obligation to accommodate, and we are also not following our own code to increase greater participation in public business. So that is the argument that I'm making for reinstatement of Zoom. And it is, it has already gone through legal as a disclaimer that does in fact reduce the risks associated. So I move that we accept the disclaimer and reinstate Zoom today.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the motion. I would amend the motion to table until I hear directly from our legal counsel.
I just told you.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Williams. I would amend, I would restate it. I would amend the motion and table this until I hear from our legal counsel. That is the amendment.
Will you accept me emailing you his document?
Before we can amend it, we have to hear the motion that was presented.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Do we want to amend your motion, Ms. Williams?
No.
Is there a second? Item dies. At this time, I will make a comment, and it may help clear up some stuff, okay? We had classes on this two weeks ago. Y'all paid for us to be trained on these things. This is a business meeting, not a public interaction, let's-have-a-conversation meeting. We do not have to allow public comment. It's not required by state law. It is a business meeting, and yes, we are businessmen. You hired us to handle the county business. Okay? Nobody has a given right to comment during the business meeting because it is business. This has been granted by the previous board so that we could interact. And it's kind of like a forestry service road where it's open to everybody. It's our land. We pay for it. But because a couple of bad actors with motorcycles go in and clear up the hillsides, the forestry service closes the roads because of some bad actors, and everybody pays the price. I would hope that that never occurs in our business meeting and we continue to allow public comment. But the public comments will stay on track with the items. They won't get no rabbit trails, no accusations, no derogatory, but things that are productive and positive. And I'd like to see that continue, but by no means do we have to continue that.
Mr. Chairman?
So by law... So by law, we do not have to grant that. But I think it's unanimous with the three of us that we would like to continue that. Am I correct in that assumption?
Mr. Chairman, I have a request.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we take a five-minute break for Commissioner Ahmet to review the email from Bill Wilson involved times that we can make a decision on this item for the public?
No, we've already passed that motion, so.
Mr. Chairman.
No more public comment.
On that issue?
We're going on to the next item.
As an ADA person, I urge you to reconsider very, very cautiously the decisions you're making. ADA and religion are the two strongest fundamental challenges you will lose in a courtroom. And if you all agree to the decision, bring Zoom back up with the protections, especially the ones Jim Kelly mentioned, you are covered. A complete board vote that's unanimous with consideration from legal almost absolves you. If you're considering me as the litigious person that made a comment relative to Zoom, you're highly misplaced because I have not filed a lawsuit in a single courtroom in this county.
Nobody said you did.
Or this state.
Okay, Mr. Rose.
But I'm just telling you.
You will control yourself.
I'm very well-controlled, even though I'm, how do we say, a little frustrated with this activity at the front.
Thank you.
I'm still in control. And I'm trying to give you constructive advice, but you don't want to listen. That's on you.
I think that listening goes both ways, Mr. Rose, but thank you.
Is there no public comment on that issue?
Mr. Chairman, I would call for the order of the day, Mr. Chairman, to return us to the agenda so that we can continue the work of Bonner County.
Yes, we will.
Mr. Chairman, you didn't allow the community public comment on the issue of Zoom? Are you denying that?
Well, the motion died, so it never got seconded.
The amendment died. There was no, there was no question about the original motion. Just so you understand what you didn't do right.
She made the motion. There was no second. Therefore, therefore, the subject is dead at that point, and there is no more public comment. Mr. Rose, you may leave. Now.
Oh, yeah.
Now.
Okay. Bye-bye. Bye-bye.
Don't forge my hand. No more public comment. That motion died. We're going on to the next item. Ms. Williams, second item. Ms. Williams, your next item, please.
My next item was that the board consider whether or not if we're not going to recombine planning and zoning, if there was some opportunity to move the number of people on zoning into the planning box. Because we are not actively using zoning because we've hired a hearing examiner. The issue that I have currently is that in our planning commission, what we're supposed to be doing is being inclusive of the community. But we have set up a system that actually has removed the participation number of community because we don't have zoning issues. And so I wanted to have a discussion of, is there an option that allows us to allow for more members? Because Bonner County as a whole has had a problem in the past of not having volunteers. That is not our problem today. We actually have a lot of people that are wanting to volunteer with our comp plan. Our planning department has used a system from the prior board, but my request to recombine it to allow for more participation was denied or failed last week. My request is, is there an option to add more members on the planning side and reduce zoning side so that we can have more people from our community? We have backgrounds in planning. We have backgrounds in natural resources. And we're not using those people. And I would like to see how we can be more inclusive in this role. If we don't have more involvement, we are going to continue to argue over our comp plan. And I'm trying to find a way to pull more people to the table of planning and zoning versus excluding because the sound of doors slamming on the community is resounding throughout this county. So I don't know the answer, but I would, that's the discussion, is can we do something? Because we're using the same people that have value, but we're not allowing new people to be part of what's happening. And we know that the educated person of 10 years ago, it's not the same education as the person that's graduating today. So we need to fill our board with more people. So that's my request to discuss.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Williams, can I ask you a couple of questions? Is there a number you'd like to? I'm open to the conversation, to be quite frank. What size do you want to? Both commissions? One commission? How many seats? I mean, I don't know. This is first, I saw it on the agenda.
The maximum number of people that we can have participate is what we should be shooting for. That is what is transparency. We have people in a holding box to participate. And if you're agreeable to that, then whatever the maximum is, that's the number we should shoot for. And that will help us make this plan better. And we should be picking people with varying backgrounds, not just people that have already been in this system. But we have a lot of valuable people. For example, Jennifer comes up with, she's representing a whole group of people with lakes. Why not invite people like that on these boards? So whatever the maximum is, if it could be shifted, then it should be shifted.
I think that's an excellent point, Commissioner Williams, and I'm open to the conversation. So I guess part of my question is, I'm not prepared to do that right now today. How do we go about it so we have a conversation and we actually engage with the existing boards that we have? So are you suggesting that today we just expand?
I'm saying you have the discussion in the form that we have here to have it. That's what this is. So we can't have that discussion. And we do have someone who is the director of the Planning and Zoning Department here that can offer some guidance. And it does, you can make a decision that says, "We want to expand it to the maximum number possible, and then we're going to move over, put it on the agenda item, and say what the maximum number is later." We don't have, and I, we don't have to ask permission from the current Planning and Zoning Board, can we expand it? If there is an expansion opportunity, we should just expand it because there are a number of people in this room who have asked to sit on this board.
Commissioner Williams, when we attended the IAC conference in Boise and we attended the board training, one of the things that Jim McNaul, who was the governmental ICrim trainer for 30 years, said is boards specifically are one of the easiest areas to get into lawsuits. And the, so I would like to try to avoid, I am, I don't know, I am super open to the idea of expanding, but I'm not super open to the idea of expanding so that we can have more lawsuits. And there was a couple of very clear points that were made by Mr. McNaul. And some of them were, one of the most important features of a board is for it to function effectively, which I will reference. So what is the, what is the, for all boards? I'm not sure what you're asking for today.
I think, I think it would be best served to maybe do a workshop with the current two boards and the commissioners and look at the process, look at some of the problems with the larger board. When you get a larger board, when you have bad weather or for whatever reason, having a quorum where you can continue and have the meeting becomes more of an issue. And so.
Actually, that's the opposite. If you have more people, then you will increase your opportunity of having a quorum.
Well, no, that's actually not the case. But I think it'd be better served if we did it in a workshop with them to find out what has traditionally worked best. That would be my recommendation.
So how do we, how do we, as a board, communicate that we are going to encourage greater public participation in local government, which is what our goal is as a county? That's what we're supposed to be doing. And so when we come as a board in front of the public and tell them, "I want to ask the people that are already on the board if they want to accept new people," that is not increasing greater participation, what we're doing. And that's where we can potentially be opening ourselves up for more attention within our own community by not opening the doors, accepting public comment, being okay. Freedom of speech is not for the speech that we agree with. It's only for that which we don't agree with, basically, to ensure that people are here. So how does a decision to table, again, a form of participation, benefit our community and follow our tenet of increasing participation? It's almost like we're trying to wear the community down so they just stop caring and stop coming. And I think that's going the opposite direction. So I would request that we can say, if there's a possibility that that's what this board will do and it comes back on the agenda, we actually task.
We haven't seen that. We haven't seen the mutual respect among you and it to us. The other thing is, what we've seen is a lot of unilaterally decisions. And when the three of you were in your campaigns with each one, you for governor and you for commissioners, the things that you have in common and the people supported you was participation. You had the flag of participation. You promised to be different than the prior people. And you have the union, which we haven't had it, and respect. We're not seeing respect to us. You're not, by being unilateral, unilateral in your decisions on the boards, of not using the people, because there are a lot of valuable people, of not using the Zoom, you're putting a line there. You are still the mafia of McDonald's there, and we are just watching. So I'm here to remind you, you promise transparency and you promise participation. And up to right now, I haven't seen none of it. You're putting rocks to avoid the participation. I know the Zoom thing is gone. Yeah, well, it should be back because, like in this case, there's a lot of people, very vulnerable, engineers, human resources, accountants, that could be doing volunteer work to help. And you said, "We are not going to be able to do our job by ourselves. We will need the participation of the people." Ms. Williams is proposing to let the people participate, to let the valuable people to be part of it, to help, to make a brainstorm. And you're not allowing that. By not allowing the Zoom, you're not allowing people to participate. Maybe I have COVID here, but I'm here because I want to participate. I want to hear. This is the cases where the Zoom will be needed. Because people with COVID that is very interested could be here. So those are the things that you're not doing. Transparency and participation. And the word of God, when you say, "We're going to be equal. We're not going to be the same, me, me, me," like McDonald's did. Just a reminder, the three of you had the words of the people because you promised to be different. And there's been the same lack of respect. And she's a woman. She's part of our community. She's representing us. And she deserves to be taken in consideration, to be respected, and not be treated like, oh, it is not important. And we, the people, we're very valuable.
I'm going to go ahead and stop you now because you kind of went a different direction. Mr. Arnn, the issue of the number of people on the commission only. Only comment. I'm going to entertain.
Okay. We seem to have a fear of litigation, which is kind of what we're talking about here. Too many people on the board who have. I don't think the problem is litigation. I think Jim Kelly put his finger right on it. I think the problem is, is that you're not winning your litigation. And it's because you're not complying with the law, the letter of the law, or the spirit of the law. So by allowing people to talk and to communicate and following the law, you're probably going to win the litigation. Litigation is going to happen regardless. What you need to do is win the litigation by complying with the law, the spirit, and the letter of the law.
Thank you.
Asia, have you considered the possibility of utilizing the volunteers as a subcommittee to the commission?
That was my backup plan if I can't get it to work. There's a lot of people that have asked if you would run a planning kind of side-by-side.
Would allow for expansion and contraction as the volunteers came and went? And they would do the legwork that the commission could then decide upon.
And they also, we discussed in the background also going through and identifying those persons that volunteered on those subareas to make sure that they are pulled into the process as well as the different kind of grassroots groups that have been focused on our development. In an ideal world, we would welcome the community on the board we've created before we run parallel to it. And that was my hope was to get a consensus from this board to move in that direction. And if that does not work, then that is my suggestion of working the background and then have that spokesperson that then is presenting the planning commissions. But it's not, we shouldn't have to do that. We should make an adjustment.
Well, subcommittee wouldn't work in the background. It would be a subset of the planning committee.
Right.
So it would be kind of like a formal group that could do the legwork that the planning commission identifies.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. Yeah, I'm going to bring us back to the point of question. And so at this time, the board will discuss, and then we have.
Motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? I stepped down from the chair and seconded. All in favor?
Roll call. Commissioner Ahmet?
Yes.
Commissioner Braden?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Okay, on to the next item. All right. Sheriff Wheeler, did you have a question?
No, I just going to say that laws clarify in Chapter 67 and 67, 6504, the maximum and minimum amount of planning and zoning is minimum is three and the maximum is 12.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Because I did attend that commissioner's meeting and heard Jim McNaul, so.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Ahmet.
Mr. Chairman, so as has become apparent, we have public participation. And thank you, everybody, for coming. Here you are. And I think, last night I attended the Fair Board meeting. I've been to planning and zoning meetings. I've been attending Bonner County Commissioner Board meetings. And what is apparent to me is that we have room to improve in how we are operating as boards and commissions. And to go back to my point that I bring forward, I think that we need to look at our processes. And we need to have uniform processes as much as possible, not only for those of us as members, but also for those volunteers that we have asked to step forward into a difficult job, which occasionally there may be members of the public who might be frustrated with the actions that are taken. They might be very engaged because they might have decades of experience working with these issues. It even goes to the point where there is generations of people that have walked this ground and have made these points. And so what I would like to advocate today and have a discussion about is to set forth a training program so that we can get not just the Board of County Commissioners, but the Fair Board and the Planning and Zoning Board, operating in a manner that serves the public, as I believe, is our duty. And as such, I have talked with Mauricio Cardona from Davelier Law to create a program so that we can be more professional and serve the public better. And with that, I would turn it over to Mauricio to have a conversation with us.
Actually, I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Do we have on the agenda a presentation from a third-party law firm?
Well, it's a discussion decision item.
Isn't on the, do we have a presentation? I mean, we, we have to, when you, it is within.
We'll go back to a point of order, and do you have a comment that you could add to this?
Well, I'd like to finish what I was going to say because you did recognize me and I did follow that procedure. In terms of when you're going to talk about board training, it's not a, it's disingenuous if you circumvent what our money has already paid for, which is our county prosecutor. And this continues to happen in this county. I don't agree with a third-party attorney presenting and being contracted based on your statement to develop some type of training when our money paid for our prosecutor's office to do that. And so this is, this is an inappropriate item that, when I saw it, I didn't know what you were referencing. But the fact that you've already reached out to a third-party attorney, how did you make the decision to hire somebody? He, you contracted him and he?
I don't believe that decision's been made.
What he just said is that he worked with Davelier to develop a training program. Am I, did I hear that wrong, or is that a?
I believe he spoke with him. He didn't, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You may.
I believe that I have no authority to enter under a contract without any type of board action. I have. I have spoken with our prosecuting attorney, and I brought forward this idea before I mentioned it with the specific reason being, I would like our prosecuting attorney to focus on prosecuting criminals. I have focused, as I have made in my statement multiple times, and that will remain my focus. And to be quite honest, the allegation that I have made any type of behavior where I broke my oath, well, that has yet to happen, and I don't think it will. Yes, I had a conversation with Mr. Cardona, and I actually, I have agendized it. I have spoken with their prosecuting attorney. It is on our agenda, and I would actually like for our agenda to continue as presented and for Mr. Cardona to present the information to the board so hopefully we can make a decision. And then as a board, we will see if, in a republic, we get a majority to agree or disagree because I believe that's how the process works.
I believe you're circumventing other elected officials, which is diametrically opposed to your specious argument of bringing everybody together. So Sheriff, he's an elected official, I'm an elected official, treasurer's an elected official. So if you truly want cohesion amongst the board, this wouldn't be an impromptu presentation from a third-party attorney. And I will note that more than once you said, my agenda, I, I, I. This is a board. It is three of us, and the interest is not in I. My job is to represent the people, which is to represent what they want to see. How can you possibly put your ideology of board training before their request for inclusion, transparency, and communication amongst this board? So there's no, it's a wasted effort to even talk about this idea of training with a third party because that is our prosecutor. And quite frankly, if he can't fulfill that function, they need to know that because we're elected officials.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond? The Board of County Commissioners makes votes, and I am keen to avoid open meeting law violations. I believe that we've had a policy before us twice so far talking about open meeting violations. I believe that this morning, that there were allegations of open meeting law violations. And yes, I personally am trying to avoid open meeting law violations, which is why I have not discussed this with Chairman Bradshaw, and I have not discussed this with you, Commissioner Williams, because I have this crazy idea that if I do, I'm violating open meeting law violations, which is why I have presented it in an open meeting, why I have asked Mr. Cardona to make that presentation so that as a board, we can make the determination of what we are going to do. I do not speak for Chairman Bradshaw. I'm pretty sure I don't speak for you. And I have one vote. So what I would like is for Mr. Cardona to present his information to the board. We consider it as a body, and we make a determination of whether or not we decide if we think that is good for the county.
Okay, did you invite all the board members from these respective boards and all the elected officials to hear his presentation? Are they here?
If, if the Board of Commissioners was to decide to adopt that training, then we would bring in all the board members.
You're saying the board can tell the sheriff what his training schedule is?
Okay, Ms. Williams, we're going back to the point of question.
Mr. Chairman, could we have Mr. Cardona present what he's developed?
Mr. Cardona, you have a comment.
Thank you. Mauricio Cardona, President Sandpoint. So to answer the question, we have not built anything to develop the proposal. This is just a proposal to develop the training. What we are proposing is to design and provide a training program that enables Bonner County Public Boards to conduct effective public meetings.
Be careful a bit, please.
Yes. To design and provide a training program.
Sorry, I don't have to keep speaking.
Oh. Let's start over. To design and provide a training program that enables Bonner County Public Boards to conduct effective public meetings and limit potential liabilities. The program we are proposing will be based on the current version of the county ordinances under Title I, County Operations, Chapter Two, Board of County Commissioners Meeting. We will also be using some basic Robert's rules of order. Then, once we develop the program, we'll be getting feedback and direction from the Board of County Commissioners for any further implementation, should that be desired. In the initial phase, we will evaluate the law and how the meetings have been conducted and how to make things more accessible. There will be an outline of the rules for public meetings created. This will be a simple reference guide of the rules drafted to be published for the public so that both the public officials and the public are aware of what the rules of the meetings are. There will also be a concise explanation of the authorities that are granted to the chair of each one of the boards and a flow chart so that the public knows in what step of the process we are. All of these is created to allow for more efficiency of the communications. We will also offer to train a selected staff person to be a parliamentarian for the meetings so that there is a neutral party who is able to answer procedural questions. Part of the training will also involve role-playing exercises to cement the understanding of the justice cost deliverables. At the end of this first phase of the training, we will come back to the board and see if there are any desired changes to the way our ordinances are currently amended. And if so, we will provide a report to the elected prosecutor for their opinion. That will then go to the board. Once we finish that stage and we have the full feedback of the commissioners, we will go into full deployment. That will be getting a list of the other boards within the county that the county commissioners would like to go through a similar process. At the end of that, we will be developing the same kind of deliverables so that they can be published by those particular boards specifying the rules, the procedures, and a flow chart to help everybody participate effectively. That is what we are proposing to develop for the county commissions.
How much?
Yeah.
Yep.
Got a question.
Or is it stop?
So I want to make a comment. So it is the obligation of these board members to understand how to run their meeting, not at the cost of taxpayer money. And if they don't know how to do that, if they don't know how to do that, that is independent research that they should be conducting on their own dime, not on county money. We are, what I am hearing is an attempt to circumvent who we elected as our prosecutor in that office. They are not our human resources department. They are not our county prosecutor. We need to restore the order and respect elected officials for the positions that they hold and stop looking to outside agencies to fulfill that gap. If we, for example, have an issue with being able to conduct a meeting correctly, if we can't remember when we're supposed to say public comment, first, second, and motion, that is an independent thing that if somebody wants to go and hire their own attorney on their own money, not using my money, and I sure am not going to support that from the perspective of Bonner County residents. Because you didn't, you didn't elect the right person if that's what your money's being spent on. As we listen to people, as we listen to people talk about the needs of our children, we are not, I am not in support of hiring something when your money is already paying for the man outside of this building right now to do absolutely everything that was just described. It is not a genuine request for training. It is a way to undermine those who are elected. And that has been the problem in this county for years, and we need to stop that right now at the cost. You don't need to tell these people the meeting. You told them they can't say anything anywhere. So what, what is the, what is the rule? What are we gonna write? Here's where you cannot speak over and over again? No. Maybe if we were gonna let them say something once or twice for more than 12 minutes, but no. You guys keep slamming the door on the community and then thinking that this board, because they're going to vote together, controls you. It only works if you comply, whether you're a taxpayer or an employee in this county building.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Can you public comment?
No. Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make.
You allow it?
Excuse me, Chair recognizes Commissioner Omet at this time. Be respectful of that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to engage Davelier Law to design and provide. Mr. Chairman, again, I make a motion to engage Davelier Law in the designing and provision of a training program that enables Bonner County Public Boards to conduct effective public meetings and to limit public liabilities and to send it to legal, to send, to create a contract and send it to legal for review.
He doesn't remember to step down, second the motion so you guys can talk.
Do we have a second? Okay, I will, at this time, step down from the chair and make a second. And the reason I'm gonna make that second because we would not be happy to. I will clear this room in a heartbeat. In a heartbeat, I will clear this room.
And clear.
Okay? We will follow order. No ifs, ands, or buts. We good with that?
No.
Well, then you may leave if you wish. But at this moment, I'm gonna speak. Had all three commissioners went to the training that you paid for, this would not be an issue.
No.
So at this time, I would step down from the chair and second that. And then he can propose what he proposes, legal can look at it, then it'll come back forward, and we'll decide.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to address your comment.
And this costs me my money.
I would like to address your comment, so I want to be clear.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, we have.
Point of order doesn't give you the opportunity to tell me I can't speak, so I'm gonna push through.
No, it doesn't, but a point of order.
I'm gonna call to the point of question then.
So I attended every, I attended the annual conference for which wasn't reimbursed. Did you sign up for a mentor, either of you in the IAC? I signed up for a mentor. I've attended more courses from the Idaho Association of County. So the comment of Mr. Bradshaw saying that we all could have attended, I've attended more than he has. I participate with government finance office.
Really? Mr. Chairman.
Really? I've been born and raised four years.
I don't know, and you still can't be meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would call a point of order. There is a motion on the floor, and there has been a second. We would go into discussion afterwards according to procedure. And I think this kind of proves the reason why I believe that we should be doing.
It's incendiary comments that make people have to push their agenda through. That's what you're doing. You continue to push these people out. We can't be held to following the rules that you guys will not follow. That's how it works.
I have a comment, pardon me.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion. We have a second. I believe that according to the rules, according to our ordinances, that we have a process. And last time I checked, this is a republic.
You're acting like it's a democracy.
You're so.
Yes, ma'am. We'll go in public comment.
Thank you, Chairman Bradshaw, Commissioner Omet, and Williams. I have a comment, and I think it's going to be to contrary to what everybody's actually thinking. I also attended the fair board meeting, and most of you probably know that we don't have a fair management tragedy in our community. And that fair board is trying to run and produce our fair this year. Kind of scratching their chin, for lack of a better word. And I don't think people realize that some of these boards are volunteers. And they're not getting paid the big bucks, as was referenced about some of our elected officials. And so a training like this could prove to be invaluable. And so Commissioner Williams, while I agree with you that elected officials and so forth don't necessarily deserve, or whatever term you might be thinking, this additional paid training, we have some volunteer boards that are taking on some very big jobs in our community and really probably could use a little more help. And volunteers are very underrated in so many capacities and so many jobs in our communities. Couldn't be done as well or at all without the help of volunteers. You look at our schools, you look at fire departments, you look at our fair boards. I could go on and on. We have so many wonderful volunteers. And quite frankly, they're doing jobs the very best they can without the training that they probably need. And, and I would use the word deserve. So I, as a citizen, although I do believe that, you know, we have responsibility to get ourselves trained in a lot of ways, I know if I was taking on a huge duty like that myself, I would sure appreciate the training that is being sought here. And I have no idea the price to have, so I'm not gonna say I would vote in favor of it or not. I'm not gonna sign blank checks. But I would entertain a motion that I would ask that you reconsider your position to at least entertain what that might look like and let the prosecutor do what he was trained to do, and that is prosecute these cases that are bombarding our community and causing havoc on our communities and trying, because I believe that is really what the prosecutor does, and leave this kind of work to somebody that might be able to be consulted. And let's just evaluate what that might look like. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Ms. Arn?
Yes, I listened to his presentation, and it all sounded good and like maybe it was needed. But why can't our own county council take care of that and fill in the gaps where they're needed, especially because money is at such a, that's why we have legal counsel, not just the prosecutor, but all the other attorneys as well?
Patterson, for the record. Yes, I listened to the presentation from Gab Davelier, and it, every other line seemed to be another dollar bill figure coming in. So I would suggest that if we're going to hire them, that the people that are looking to have them do this, rather than getting volunteers from the community, I would mention that some of the ex-county commissioners are statewide-recognized experts on parliamentary procedure and would probably volunteer to help you if you need it. So if you're going to hire these people, it ought to come out of your own private pockets.
Yeah, Sherri Devaultly for the record. I have two question comments, whatever. The first is, it is my understanding that Bill Wilson is already a civil attorney being paid by the county. He is not a criminal attorney. He does not go prosecute criminals. He works for the Board of Commissioners.
And he is working with the fair board as well.
And the fair board. The other is, I'd like to know if Davelier Law Group got paid for their presentation? Or if they're working for free? Okay, well, I didn't catch that, and that's why I wanted to be clear that you didn't get paid for all of your presentation.
Not for the design of the proposal, no.
Okay.
Yeah, Rick Gray for the record. This is, in my mind, a tax. It's an additional cost for the public to endure. It's sort of open-ended. How much is this gonna cost? And I consider it a tax because it's unnecessary wasted expense. And just like the open meeting, the Zoom meeting things, in my mind, that's a tax on me also. I have to pay for very expensive diesel fuel to drive for an hour and a half to come to these meetings. And if I don't come to these meetings, if I'm, you know, can't afford it, say, for example, then the people that will attend these meetings will be the local people from the city standpoint. That is not, that's partisan, quite frankly. That forces a large majority of one party into these meetings and excludes and makes it difficult in a partisan manner against those of us that live out in the outskirts. That's all I gotta say.
Dave, Mr. Bowman?
All right. Dave Bowman for the record. You know, this is a solution in search of a problem. You have an open meetings guide that's put out by the state attorney general, and it is, it is written in plain English. Anybody with a high school education or probably less than that can read it. And no, you all should know, if you haven't read that, you should. Everybody in this room should read it. It's an easy read, and it will tell you how to guide yourself in these meetings. And in addition, the county prosecutor, while the title is prosecutor, is charged by state statute to defend the county and work with the county in civil matters. They probably should give it a different name than prosecutor, but that's his job. So the last thing this county needs is further transfer of money from the county coffers that are. that are already short to the Davelier Law Firm.
I just, I find it ironic that Commissioner Omt, in the beginning of the meeting, you mentioned the 6% inflation and that, you know, anything, it's your responsibility collectively to manage our budget, and 6% inflation, to me, means we need to cut somewhere, not add another expense that could be accounted for with resources that are already on payroll or perhaps free resources, and so, I object, I just, I don't see, I don't see the logic in trying to hire an outside firm to do something that can be done within the county.
Okay, for clarity, the motion is to allow him to make a proposal as to what that class would look like, whether or not it would have a fee, or if he's doing it pro bono, we don't know until we get a proposal. He charges nothing to give a proposal, and that's what the question is, do we want to look at that? So.
No, that's not what he said.
He said hire.
He said, put a contract together.
If we like the proposal that they bring forward after legal reviews.
Isn't that what he just did?
Real quick, Monica Gunner, I was on the Fair Board for 22 years, and I'm really sorry what happened out there, but we worked together wonderfully. We had a Fair Board, we made the fairs go, it all worked, and they've gone through some real crap this year, but it has nothing to do with the Fair Board. The Fair Board's taken their, they're doing what they can to put on the fair this year through a horrible tragedy that happened, but they, we worked together as a Fair Board. We didn't do this, we worked together, we discussed, we smiled, we were happy.
I wanted to read Idaho Code 312604, a portion of it, it says, "It is the duty of the prosecuting attorney," number three is, or several, I'm sorry, "number three is to give advice to the board, to other public officers of this county, when requested, in all public matters arising in the conduct of public business entrusted to the care of such individuals." So, I would just suggest that perhaps if we're going to make an invitation to an outside counsel, we also extend that same invitation to our own prosecuting attorney to do that for us.
Mr. Chairman, I would call the question. We have a variety of meetings to include with, I can speak for myself, with a lawyer in regards to a lawsuit that is currently in place today, which I was not by the party to, but I have now been drawn into it, as well as a matter of the number of executive sessions, so that we can move forward with the business of the county, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, and I think, I think we know where everybody stands on it at this moment, so I'll allow one more comment, lady in the plaid shirt.
Sue Boucher, Modern County resident, haven't seen you guys in a while, because we've been busy. I do want to stress one thing to all the commissioners concerning this issue and many others, when you are looking for outside anything, what is disturbing me the most is the fact that you are only looking in one direction. If we need some legal counsel, or if we need some representation that ours can't provide, either we can hire some more people in that office, or we can put out a bid. I'm personally tired of not using the bidding system, and this goes for other issues within, where are the bids? That's the only.
Thank you. So, we will move forward to the next item.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion on the floor, if we could vote on my motion, which was to engage, was to engage, to be clear, to engage Davelier Law, yes, in the construction, to design and provide a training program that enables Bonner County Public Boards to conduct effective public meetings and limit potential liabilities, and people just, the reason I'm trying to make it clear is because we have a clerk who has to create minutes so that these records are known, so that we can comply with open meeting law, and I believe that you had seconded the motions, Mr. Chairman.
And at this time, we're calling for a vote.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Omt?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Okay, next item.
Mr. Chairman, I have two items about, so this one I have regarding the organization of Bonner County Business Meeting, and that's this meeting. In conversation with one of our staff members, his father used to be the county attorney, he mentioned that executive session used to be held in the beginning of the meeting, and I have spoken with the prosecutor's staff, and they were open to this, and the reason why I would bring this to the board's attention for a decision is if we were to have the executive session at 9:00 a.m., and if we were to hold this part of the meeting at 10:00, the discussions that happen in executive session, we could bring to peoples, we could be asked by the public, so we could answer those questions, and we aren't asking people to get up and leave other than the beginning, so what would happen, it would be, there would be a call to order, and then we would immediately go into executive session, and then at, and I'm giving a general assessment, we would go into that, and then at 10:00, we would have the members of the public come in, and we would be able to present to the members and answer their questions, and we would address some of those issues, so moving executive session to the beginning of the meeting. I spoke with the prosecutor and Mr. Wilson, and they were amenable to this, and if it took more than 10:00 a.m. so that we can actually honor the public's time, and we needed to an executive session afterwards, we would have to adjust as necessary. So, I wanted to see what the board thought of this plan, if that's something that we should do. I personally am in support of it, the prosecutor was in support of it, so I wanted to bring it to Commissioner Williams and yourself as a discussion item, to see if we could try to provide later, greater clarity to the public about what we're doing.
So, I'll give a comment on this. So, I don't really care where executive session sits, what I have an issue with is, this is not to occur without the public. What's supposed to happen is, we talk about, for example, there's a comment here that says HR personnel, and then discussing human resources, which is big. If we're going to discuss things other than a specific personnel item, that's what goes in executive session, but the other part is open to the public, and so, we don't have executive session and then tell you what we did, we're supposed to pop in and pop out regardless of where it actually sits on the actual agenda, they will have to come and go, because we should be encouraging them to stick around for executive session. If there was an agenda item discussion, I would recommend that we guarantee that we are going to have a set amount of time, 12 minutes is not reasonable, when this number of people are coming, to not be able to give real public comment, when they only get three minutes, you're saying you're stopping it at 12, and we have a significant number of people that are being pushed into coming into the building, because we're not doing Zoom. So, if we're gonna adjust the agenda, I say we give the community guaranteed time to speak on each item and public comment, but executive session, they're going to have to come and go regardless of where it's at.
Sorry, you, this, I'm not.
If you want it at the beginning, fine, but I'm still gonna tell everybody, you need to be here at 9:00, because we have to pop in and out of executive session, that's the way you're supposed to run the meeting. I took a class on that one.
We do go in and out for each individual item.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious what your thoughts are. It's our call as a board as to how we run this meeting, so Mr. Marshall is out there, I believe, waiting at some point for our executive sessions, but that's what I had to bring forward.
Well, I make a motion that we include giving a set amount of time for the public to give a comment, not that we stop at 12. Well, I'm amending his amendment, which you can do. He has an amendment to move executive session, and I am asking for an amendment similarly to what he did online. So, I'm asking, as we amend the agenda, that we actually give public comment its due time, not 12 minutes.
That would be up to the chairman when the chairman is chairman, okay? So, that's where that will go. So, and I am perfectly okay with going back to more public comment, once this meeting runs smoothly, but until it runs smoothly, that's where we're gonna be at. So, so the motion, motion is on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, I don't know what the motion is, I mean, I was starting with the discussion, which is, it's not about the order of the agenda, there is nothing on my agenda item about that, it is regarding the organization of the Bonner County Business Meeting, and what I brought forward.
Was a possibility.
Was whether or not we want to move executive session to the front of the meeting. Now, there is a motion on the floor, so, Commissioner Williams, if you'd like to make a motion, I'm happy to hear it, but I'm not sure exactly what the motion is, so, I mean, at this point, I was just bringing.
I don't see the difference, so I don't, whether it's at the beginning or at the end, the community has to go and come for executive session, so I don't understand what you're asking for, so I don't have a reason to make a motion, so you might ask the chairman if he can make a motion for you somehow.
I was looking to have a conversation in open meeting, so that we are not violating open meeting law, and we can have a discussion how to best serve the public, and that.
But I did answer, what I said was, executive session, what you said, the reason to move it is because the community has to come and go, and I'm saying, the community has to come and go because it's executive session, so if you're wanting to slide executive session to the beginning of the agenda, it doesn't do anything different other than move it. They still have to get up and leave, because you enter executive session, then you come out, and you discuss, and then if it's a decision item, you do the decision item in public.
We'll be here at 9:00, I think, is what you're thinking, we're here at 9:00.
No, you have to, because if we're going.
He's thinking we're not here, he does his thing and comes back.
And that's what my statement was, you don't get, that's not what executive session is, you don't go, you just don't show up, you come at 9:00, nothing actually should change.
Mr. Chairman, there's no motion, I'm happy to move on for the purpose of the business meeting to number five.
We are on to the last item, number five.
And I have number five listed, Mr. Chairman, actually, and I agree with Mr. Rose, I think that we can do better in regards to our agenda items, and I've asked Mr. Storms to possibly reference, it's a big ques, does our website provide a good public interface? Personally, I don't think it does, but I, and what I would like to see is a calendar of meetings, so we have a much more friendly user interface for the public, and we could have these agenda items attached, I believe, if we have the appropriate website. I'm not a tech guru, so I've asked Mr. Storms to be able to reference what he believes is in, I mean, what best serves our website.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your grace and your patience, I'm not the best public speaker, but we've been, we've had a lot of, we like to call it low-hanging fruit here in the county, so we've been working on a lot of different projects, improvements, network systems, all that stuff. The website is a priority, I agree. We, in the past, have tried to manage it as best we can, I agree with Commissioner Omt, I think all three commissioners are right, we need to get more information out there, we are information technology, we need to get information out to everybody, our end-users and the public. We are looking into other options, so we are looking to reach out to other counties, see how they manage their websites, see how that looks, Cootney County being one of them. The way it currently works, our website can handle the needs of what the commissioners want to request and what the public deserves, it's just, it's a little cumbersome to manage, so we could look for improvements, we will be looking at other cost options, so, you know, other counties' needs don't necessarily mean that it's gonna be the best fit for Bonner County, but we're gonna do our duties of making sure we implement something that's right, something that's sustainable, and something that, you know, will fit everybody's needs.
So, Mr. Storms, just so I'm quick, does the website, does the website we have, is it functioning well?
It functions, it, it, it functions.
Are there better products out there that could provide?
Yes, sir, there are better. All right, so.
Yeah, and this is something he's been working on for a while, this came up sometime back.
At least in evaluation, yes, with the new commission that came in, we know, we are aware that it's a need.
So, you have anything, Commissioner Williams?
Nope, I think everybody, this is easy one of the ones.
So, this is, just for the pub, this is only, this is only a discussion item, I mean, it's up to the chairman, but I mean, I think with the chairman's permission, what I would like to do is direct Mr. Storms to get some more information and come back and present to the board in an open session, like how, what we can do better.
Can I give an idea?
It's up.
It's just an idea.
I would ask that we do a workshop with the community, because they're the ones that are interfacing with the website, and they would have very reasonable input to give of what they'd like to see before you start looking to third parties, because that's who the website belongs to.
And that's one of the things that he's been working on, it came up sometime back. It wasn't as user-friendly as we'd like it to be, so that's why they're, and the county website is not like the local hardware store website or something, it's got, you got the sheriff's office, you got the court system, all of that is in there, so there's a, just a whole bucket full of little things that a normal business website does not have to deal with, so it's a little more challenging for him, yeah. Yes, ma'am?
In that matter, a lot of, I'm a business owner, so we are always trying to see how we can help the community and write off that from our taxes, like a donation, so, yes, it needs, our website needs improvement, and we could see the possibility of talking to the companies who, because we have people here who do our websites, who see if they can donate their website to us, that way, it will be a good publicity for the business who does it, they can write it off as a donation, and it won't cost one dime to the county, so it will be a win-win for everybody, a win-win for us, a win-win for the website, and for the business who does that as a donation, it will be great, because it won't cost anyone, and the business will can reduce that from taxes.
Yeah, and when you look at outside companies coming in to look at our website, you gotta take in consideration, you got the sheriff's office, you got the court system, you got prosecutor's office, and there's just a whole lot of that website that they're never gonna have access to.
No, but they can.
But they could have ideals.
They, and they can use it.
And you never know where the next great ideal's coming from.
Can I have a point of clarification?
Yes.
I think we're talking about a website, not sheriff-specific information, so I don't think.
Well, I was just talking about the challenges that an outside company would have, because they can't have access to it.
Can I make, can I make a comment real quick?
Please.
I just, just wanted to address, yeah, we've been, we have been working with departments as we can, so, I'll just, I'll just put this out there, we've been working hard on trying to get something for the planning department as far as like a customer service portal, so things can be done online, people don't have to come in, that kind of thing, and it's, it's, we ran into some roadblocks, but that's the way it is with, with technology in and of itself. We do have systems here that Commissioner Bradshaw says, you know, will have to integrate into the website, so we have to do a lot of research in how that's gonna work. Reaching out to some local businesses, I think Cochava might be one, it could be something that we do, see how they can possibly help on our county. There's a lot of different routes we can go, but, you know, we're optimistic, and we like to dive in into whatever we're learning, so, it's a fun part of the job.
Jennifer?
Thank you, Chairman. Jennifer Extron, for the record, I want to thank Commissioner Omt for bringing this issue forward, I think there's a lot of room for improvement, and I'm super grateful for this topic to be discussed. I just wanted to make a simple suggestion, that it sounds like there's a lot of technical details to work through on these various layers of the website, and I might recommend a tiered approach where maybe more quickly there could be a reorganization of the various department meetings and agendas and minutes, so that they're easily found and accessible before getting into like the higher function of interface and that sort of thing. Thank you.
Yeah, and this is not a decision item, this is just a discussion item, ladies, we can make it more user-friendly, I think.
Mr. Chairman, she had her hand up a couple times, I think she did know.
I just had a question for Mr. Storms.
Jacob. Yes.
Are you well-funded? I mean, are we, I don't know technology, but are we, is Bonner County changes all the time?
It does, yes, ma'am.
Are you situated?
We, so, so I stepped in basically at the end of last fiscal year, and it's been, it's been quite a task. And it's been, it's been quite a task to kind of look and see. IT, IT in general is a cost, right? You know, we don't, we don't make money. But what we do is we help provide the best support that we can and service we can for our end users and obviously the public, you all. I haven't been able to find, and this is something that I've just taken, I've taken notes today. I haven't been able to find what Bonner County pays for our web services currently. So that's on my agenda, personal agenda. Once I take a look at that, I'll have to see. I think reducing costs is always the best option. But a reduction in cost, when it comes to IT, doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to get the best, the best product. So, you know, we got, we got a lot of work to do. The website is, it's not an easy task, you know? We can make do with what we currently have, for sure. And Commissioner Omat has reached out. I've even talked with Commissioner Williams about certain ways we can go about procedurally and making changes and that kind of stuff. So we will look to add. And I got thrown into the website when I stepped in. And I've had the benefit of working with knowledgeable people who've kind of already, who have already been familiar with our website, but yeah.
God bless you.
Yeah, thank you.
Last question.
Brett Roush for the record. Everything, all the comments I'm hearing, both from up there and back behind me, we need a workshop. That's my comment. There's a lot more discussion still needs to go on.
There's a lady back there with her hands out for a little one.
I just had a question. Why couldn't we reach out to, say, NICWS Gonzaga?
Yep, you totally can do that. I'm sorry, I cut you off. Yep.
If one of their, you know, some of their students would want to do a website for class, it would be free?
The main thing that we've researched is, so colleges, non-governmental entities, the website services that we use would not necessarily or may not be compliant. So we tend to look towards other governmental entities, local. I mean, you know, like I was saying, I went to Idaho Operations of Emergency Management probably six months ago and met a lot of people from Ada County. Other IT professionals that were doing this thing have gone through all this. So they're good resources for us to see like how we can compare. Obviously, we're not Ada County, but we don't have the budget that Ada County does. But we can at least see how they're doing things. And that's, that tends to be the reason why we look towards more local government services.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would like to return to the order of the day so that we can get to the business meetings and to continue, Mr. Chairman.
Well, this was the last item, and, yeah, customer service.
Yes, sir.
It's quite a challenge from your part.
Doing the best I can.
But he's been working on it for a year now and still looking. We are aware, audio and video are an issue. So that is 10:56, and I will adjourn this meeting.
Can we recess? We have executive sessions. Recession?
Yeah. What, do we need 10 minutes to get up there?
Whatever you'd like to do.
We have a 10-minute recess and go into executive session upstairs.
Well, we'll have to, Mr. Chairman, we have to reopen the meeting. I guess we'd like to make a motion here to do so, Mr. Chairman.
But there's a question here. You're saying, if they leave, you're saying that they're not. Executives pop in and out of, so you're giving an impression that you're going upstairs.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just have a motion.